Unique going on. We have four new members to P and Z Commission, and I don't think we've had this before at one time. So I want to welcome all our new members here. And if you have questions, please ask. The three who have been on here have all gone through what you're going through right now on that. So, welcome and look forward to working with you in the future here. Why don't we go ahead and introduce ourselves? Ted, if you could lead off and we'll just make a circle around.
I'm Ted Gambogi.
My name is Tom Hutchison.
Greg Lizell.
Butch Tracy.
Stan Galagowski.
George Lee.
Thank you. We also have several city council members here. This is probably the biggest audience from city council we've had in a long time. We have Phil Good, Kathy Rusing, Billy Orr, and Steve Siska. Now Steve is our official liaison. Is that still correct, Steve?
Yes.
Okay. We also have staff members present here, and they will introduce themselves when they come up. But I want to welcome John back. It's good to have you back here, and I want to thank you for your service. As one Middle Eastern vet to another, it's good to see you back on that. Okay. Now to the official announcements here. This is an open public meeting and is being taped and recorded and videotaped by the city. The proceedings are being televised by representatives of the public media, the public, local cable and/or radio stations, and may also be rebroadcast. The commissioners' presence are seven. It will require four votes for a majority. As some individuals may be attending this meeting remotely, all parties wishing to be heard, including commission members, are required to state their name prior to speaking in order to ensure accurate minutes. Normally, we don't, commission members don't do this, but since we're in these unique situations, we want to make sure everybody understands who is talking here. When called upon, are required to state their name and address for the record so that we may know who is speaking and be able to contact them at a later date if necessary. Please keep your phones or PC microphones on mute unless you are speaking to minimize the background noise. Thank you. So the first item on the agenda is the approval of the May 27, 2020 meeting minutes.
And Mr. Chairman, just as a reminder at the beginning, my name is George Worley. I'm the planning manager here. All of our votes, because we have some remote participation, are roll call votes. So after you have a motion and a second, Kaylee Nunez will call your names for the vote.
Thank you, George. Do we have a motion concerning the minutes?
I move that the minutes are approved as written.
Motion made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. So we have a motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Okay. We will now take a vote on approval of the May 27 meeting. Please say yes or no. Don Michaelman.
Yes.
Ted Gambogi.
Yes.
George Lee.
Yes.
Thomas Hutchison.
I approve.
Diane Galagowski.
Yes.
Greg Lizell.
Yes.
Butch Tracy.
Yes.
Okay.
The motion passes unanimously.
Alrighty. Now for our next item on the agenda is ANX 20-002, James Property Annexation, an application to annex a small area of land to be incorporated into the Walden Ranch subdivision and combined with partial 106-01-090, Lot 68. George, are you handling this?
I am, sir. Thank you. This is a request for a determination by the Planning Commission on the appropriate zoning associated with an annexation. So we're going to talk a little bit later in the orientation session about what annexations entail and what your role is in them. This is an unusually small annexation that only has one action by this commission necessary. Normally, there's a rezoning associated with it, or subdivision plat, or something like that. In this particular case, none of that is before you today. So we're going to walk through this, but feel free to ask questions along the way. I'll be happy to talk about why you're doing what you're doing, but I'm going to try and cover that in the presentation. So the area proposed to be annexed is a small piece of county property that's adjacent to the city of Prescott and adjacent to an existing subdivision in the city of Prescott. The intention, and we'll get a little further in, you'll see exactly what it looks like, is to take the small piece of property, annex it into the city, attach it to the lot. You can see the arrow is pointing to the property in question. The lot immediately to the right of it is the proposed lot to have the attachment made, and integrate it into the lot by a separate action. That separate action is a council action. It doesn't come to this body for review. That's a revision of the plat of the subdivision. The county zoning of the property is R1L18. That means it's a residential, single-family, minimum lot size of 18,000 square feet. Under state statutes, when we bring property into the city through an annexation, we have to determine the closest equivalent in city zoning that doesn't increase density. In our case, we actually have an identical density city zoning that is SF18. The 18 means 18,000 square foot minimums. The county's 18 means 18,000 square foot minimums. There's no deviation between the county's density and our density. It is adjacent to property, however, that's zoned, single-family, six, that would allow lots as small as 6,000 square feet. Remember, the state law says you can't annex to a higher density, so we couldn't annex it in and make it 6,000 square foot. We couldn't do the SF6 with it without a full rezoning process. And given the reason for the annexation that's unnecessary with this piece of property, it is not unusual, and we have many instances throughout the city of having a single parcel with more than one zoning district on it. It's in fact very common to have multifamily or commercial zoning on a parcel at a major street frontage, and then behind that to have single-family zoning. This property will have a high-density zoning on the piece where the house construction will occur, and a lower-density piece on the back edge, the west edge of the property that's being annexed. Again, not out of the ordinary for zoning here or elsewhere. The property in question is a relatively small piece of property. It's proposed to meet the minimum state law requirements of 300 feet of frontage along the city's boundary. That is a minimum requirement for any annexation. And it can't be more than twice as deep as it is wide. So in this particular case, you can see it's a relatively narrow strip of property. It's more or less conforms to the existing boundary shape. It will be incorporated into the city. It will subsequently be incorporated into the upper lot. And I don't know if I have a laser that's going to work well for this. It's not showing up, sorry. So this is the lot it will be incorporated into. It's Lot 68. So it will become part of that lot. That will become an irregular-shaped lot. Again, not an uncommon feature in Prescott. A little bit zoomed in just to give you a little better view of it. Again, the annexation will connect to the Lot 68 you see at the top of the picture on the right-hand side. So typically, you would see additional steps involved that would require action by Planning Commission. In this particular case, your job by state law is to determine the appropriate zoning. And in this case, staff's recommendation is to use the one that matches the county's existing density. So we're recommending that you approve an initial, and in this case, probably permanent, zoning of SF18 to match the county zoning for this proposed annexation. And I know that's probably mind-boggling for someone who hasn't done an annexation before. Ask me some questions. Thank you.
Questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Certainly.
There are some requirements about the 300 feet and width. This slide's a little hard to read. What is the actual length along the boundary of 68 and 69?
It is 300 feet.
Exactly?
The annexation area was adjusted to meet the minimum requirement, so they adjusted it to 300 feet. So...
Thank you. Other questions?
May I have two ask that question? I didn't get...
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot.
That's okay.
This is Ted Gambogi.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, Tom Hutchison here.
Yes, sir.
George, I'm confused about a couple of things.
Certainly.
The first one is, does Lot 68 become bigger?
That is correct.
And what is the zoning of this new, new and improved, bigger Lot 68? SF6 or...
It's actually not an "or," it's an "and." It will have two sections of the lot, zoned differently. So the primary section of the lot is zoned SF6. Primary construction, the development of the house of the parcel, will be on that area and will conform to that designation. The remainder of the lot will match the county zoning at SF18, and will incorporate some outside features that are not subject to a density requirement, such as a swimming pool, a fenced yard, things like that. So it is perfectly normal, confusing sometimes, but normal, to have more than one zoning district on a single legal lot.
Okay. The second question is, what's behind this? What is the intention of this? Why are they doing this? Why take the trip?
Well, we do have an applicant online who can respond to that. My understanding is the construction of the house on Lot 68 would include some outdoor features, like a swimming pool, that would better be suited, pushed further to the west of the house location, and this would allow them to do that. We do have Gary Kelly with Kellywise Engineering, and Ron James, who is responsible for the property ownership of all three of the parcels in question, 68, 69, and the county parcel. So gentlemen, if you have a more clear answer you'd like to throw out there, please feel free.
Ron's here. Yes?
Please, one of our commissioners...
This is Ron James.
Thank you, Ron. One of our commissioners has asked for a little explanation as to why the annexation is necessary for your proposed development on the lot. Would you like to give him a little background on why you're doing this?
Um, let me give you a little background. In the narrative I sent in, it pretty much explains it, but here's, I own Lot 68, I own Lot 69, I own the area that wants to be annexed, and I also own the house below that, the lot below that as well. Lot 68 is very steep on the front end from Stone Path Trail to get up there. So by the time you get your road up to Stone Path, up off of Stone Path Trail to the top, it does not leave any room for a yard. And my daughter, who wants to build up there, who grew up here in Prescott, and grew up, that was her stomping grounds as a young girl, would like to have that as a backyard for her three kids that are age two, four, and six. And so what we, the reason is to make Lot 68 bigger so that they can actually have a backyard. Otherwise, when you design the house, you walk out and you got two feet before you're going to be at that fence. And so all it is, is to create a backyard.
Thank you.
Lot 68.
Thank you, Ron. We appreciate that.
Lot 69 is not going to be impacted because you can't build on it. It's got a terrific slope on it, and there's a deed restriction that says you can't build within 125 feet of the property line. So it's not going to impact 69, and if it did, it doesn't matter since I own it.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
George, I have one more.
I'm sorry?
Hold on, Ron. I think we have one more question. Let's see if it's for you or me.
Okay.
This is for George.
Yes, sir.
Probably illegal.
The P and Z meeting that Ron wanted me to attend.
I read Arizona Statute 9, Section 3L, that speaks to, shall adopt zoning that permits densities and uses not greater than the county. It hung up on the metric on percentage of lot being used. SF18 is 25%.
Yeah, I think the issue of density is a little different than lot coverage that you're thinking of.
It's a metric that's in the same table.
But the density is the number of units per acre, and that's controlled by the minimum lot size, not how much of the lot can be covered by development. So the minimum lot size is the trigger for whether it's in conformance or not in conformance with county zoning. So at 18,000 square feet per lot, you have effectively four lots per acre. At, well, two and a half lots per acre. At, thank you. At, we're remoting in Tammy's behind me in control of my screen, which is reassuring. So the SF18 is the minimum lot size. It's the minimum number of lots you can get in an acre. So it doesn't matter how many square feet of each of those lots you cover with a building. So it's just that lot size.
So basically, the R1L18 county at 25% coverage of the lot versus the SF18 city of 35% doesn't constitute a greater usage?
It doesn't constitute a greater density.
Why, so I'm confused why that's, there are a number of metrics in that box that describes density.
Yes. Well, typically, for zoning purposes, density is the number of residential units you can get on residentially-zoned property, and that's usually controlled by the number of lots. Because as single-family residential, you can only have one single-family residence on each lot. So if you can have two and a half lots in the county under that designation, and you can have two and a half lots in the city under that designation, they match up per the state law requirement on density.
George, may I make a comment?
Sir? Yes, go ahead.
I was just going to say, if they're concerned about putting another house or something on there, it's still got to apply to the HOA restrictions and everything, comply with all the restrictions the HOA has, and we're not planning another house or anything like that. So density, I'm not sure is a real big issue. It's still going to be one lot.
Let me just address it. Thanks, Mr. James. John Palladini here. So George is right. When we're talking about equivalent zoning or equivalent density, we're talking about the number of dwelling units per acre. That's strictly what we're talking about. In nearly every situation, your county zoning at an 18,000 square foot lot is going to have different development standards than your municipal zoning. Usually, municipal zoning is more stringent, or more limited, if you will. So when we, when the city annexes property, and we have, and we do the audit, what's called sort of the automatic or equivalent zoning, as it first comes in, without going through the full zoning process, it's simply transferring the density, the number of units per acre, dwelling units per acre, or in a commercial situation, it'd be square footage or uses. It gets a little more complex when you do commercial. But if you do dwelling units per acre, you move into the city, 18,000 square foot lot, whatever the closest equivalent is. So if the city didn't have an 18,000 square foot lot, but it had a 20,000 square foot lot, that would be the zoning. You can't go more dense, meaning more units per acre, but the development standards are almost in every situation, no matter what county and what city, the city zone or the city development standards are going to be usually more stringent or more limited.
So your legal opinion is, is that the difference between 25% and 35% coverage is a moot point?
It's not relevant to the decision of equivalent zoning. It's important, it's part of the consideration down the road. And again, as George was saying, though, this would be an outlier-type decision, by the way, because in almost every event, an annexed parcel that goes in, that comes into the city, is going to get rezoned to something more dense than what the county allows. In almost, I could tell you in almost every situation that I've seen in 20-something years, nobody comes into the city and says we want to do, or rarely comes into the city and says we want to do the same zoning that's in the county. Now, down the road, you may see that for big lot-type developments, but in the most cases, people won't want greater density, more units per acre. So this is kind of an outlier-type decision. But again, the decision matrix is, what's the county zoning units per acre? What's the city zoning units per acre? The equivalent is 18,000 square feet.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Are there any other questions? Either of staff or the applicant? If none, do I hear a motion concerning this item?
Tom Hutchison, I make a motion to approve.
We need to see if there's anyone else online who may want to comment. Okay, it looks like Gary Kelly is on representing Ron James. I don't know if he has any comments that he would like to make. If not, you may proceed.
We're back to, does anyone want a motion concerning this agenda item?
Okay. I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded.
Greg Lizell seconds.
Yes, and Ted Gambogi made the motion.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tom Hutchison made the motion.
Tom Hutchison made the motion. Kaylee?
Kaylee, we're ready to take the vote.
This is a planned part of our...
Okay. All right. I will now take vote. Please say yes or no after your name. Don Michaelman.
Yes.
Ted Gambogi.
Yes.
George Lee.
Yes.
Thomas Hutchison.
Yes.
Stan Galagowski.
Yes.
Greg Lizell.
Yes.
Butch Tracy.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Are there any staff updates?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome. Have fun in the pool.
[laughing]
All right, no staff announcements. Summary of current or recent events?
Mr. Chairman, we do not have time in three hours to give you all of that.
Okay.
No, none from staff.
Alrighty. Then we will be adjourning this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Actually, we're keeping the meeting in session. The training session following on is an agenda item on your agenda, so we can just proceed to the next step in this process.
We will go from there.
Thank you, sir.
Can we turn the lights on up here, too?
We are still displaying this. One thing to note, as part of this process, not only are people attending via Zoom, but they are still able to watch this via the Prescott Media Center's website. So this still lets that information show up for the public.
Okay. I turn it over to staff for the training.
There we go. Okay. So, good morning, Planning Commission members. John Palladini here. This is your sort of training schedule for today. I should go through this like in the Army. This is what you're going to learn today, and I'll tell you what you learned, and then make sure you learned it by giving you a test that you have to pass with a 70% passing rate, but you get to take the test unlimited number of times until you get 70%. So, anyway, just kidding. So we're going to talk a little bit about open meeting law, just to give you a primer. And then at the end, we're going to talk a little bit about we, meaning Matt and I, Matt Pedraki is going to be your regular attorney who attends your planning commission. We're going to talk a little bit about cell tower law, again, to give you a primer. And the reason we're sort of just giving you a primer today is because at the end of July, early August, we're going to do a full-blown open meeting law, conflicts of interest, public records, and hostile work environment, workplace harassment type training. We usually do it every year for boards and commissions in April. For some reason, this year, we didn't do it in April. But, so we're going to push that to July, August. But want to just give some of you, kind of, probably, some of you are refresher, and some of you, this may be new, open meeting law training, so that you kind of have just enough to know until we get into the July, August training, that you're all obviously invited and encouraged and mandated to attend. And then at the end, after your planning staff goes through your other sort of training items, we'll talk a little bit about cell tower law, because you have an item coming up in the relatively near future on cell tower issues. Again, it's going to be kind of brief, because on July the 14th, we're doing, for the city council study session, we're doing probably an hour of cell tower law training in anticipation of this same item and other items. And we're going to encourage you to all attend either remotely or in person, depending on how the room lays out. So you'll be able to get a little bit more in-depth on the cell tower stuff, too. So while I go through the open meeting law briefly, just feel free to ask questions. And so this is what you would generally see one by one at our training. So let me just give you a real quick. The public's business is done in public. That's the bottom line of all this stuff. So as a majority, or as a quorum of the Planning Commission that sits into a meeting, you are to do your business in open session. Rarely do we go into executive session for the Planning Commission. Trying to think if we've done it. Never, okay? So never. Right. So we don't go into exec session. We probably, you know, generally speaking, don't need it, don't need to do it. Again, so all of your business regarding the Planning Commission decisions are done here in public. So the corollary to that, the opposite of that, is you don't do any of the business not in public. In other words, you don't get together, you don't call each other, you don't email each other, to talk about things that are coming up on your agenda, or that might come up on your agenda in the future, if you kind of anticipate it coming up. Does that mean that two commission members talking outside of the meeting about an item on an agenda outside violates open meeting law? No, not technically. The problem is, is if those two members talk with each other, and then each talks to another separate commissioner, you've had four people have a conversation. And so we sort of just encourage that. The most conservative way to approach it is, is just talk about business in these meetings, and then you're safe. Don't talk about things outside of the commission hearings. So obviously, this commission is subject to all open meeting law. If you were ever to create some sort of subcommittee for some reason, that would be subject to open meeting law requirements. Your notice and agendas are all done by your staff, so it's not something you really need to worry about. So, but again, pay attention to your notice and agendas, so that you kind of stick, and this is really more for the chairman, is when you do have public comment, or members of the public, or members of the commission start talking about things, and your legal staff will be here to help, that sort of go off on tangents, not that this commission would, but sometimes people do, and sometimes the public does, goes off on tangents. Our job is, as your legal staff, is kind of reel it back in, you know, because for instance, if we're talking about the prior item about an annexation, and somebody from the public said, you know, I don't think we should do annexations, and by the way, I don't like the AED annexation, and starts going down that path, the chairman's job is to go, okay, whoa, 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 reel it back in, not on the agenda today. Let's talk... on the agenda today, let's talk about the agenda item, there'll be a chance in the future to have that discussion. So you want to kind of reel it back in as best you can, and you certainly don't want to respond or reply as commission members to people who may be public members who make comments that really aren't on the topic for, for the day. So I'm going to skip over executive session discussions, and sort of give you the list of, of don'ts. And the simplest way to approach this is, is just don't communicate about planning commission items outside of the meeting. Don't email each other, don't, don't talk on the phone, you know, don't go out to lunch, don't go, don't go to happy hour, and talk, talk about something other than the commission. I'm sure you've got more interesting things to talk about, and better things to talk about than, than your commission business. Do it here, and have a free-for-all here. And that's the best way to do it, and it's the best way to avoid any kind of open meeting law complaints or allegations. And, and it's easy to do, it's easy not to talk about things when are the, there are sort of these benign pedestrian kind of issues and items that come up. It's the controversial stuff that people love to talk about. And, and, you know, I mentioned AED, and there'll be, there'll be other, the cell tower item that will come up in, on your agenda in the future. People who, people will call you, people will talk to you, people will want to give you input, the public. You, you can certainly take those calls, you can feel those calls, that you don't have to. It's your, your decision whether you take the call, you get emails, you know, you can, you can respond individually to those people, if it's an email or a phone call, but don't share it amongst each other. And so what happens oftentimes, there was an email that came yesterday, I don't think any of you got it, because I don't think any of you have the .gov email. Right? Okay. Right. So, so if, if, if you're, if you, the public will get your email address, whether it's at prescott.gov, or if you decide to use your personal email address, the public may get that. And the public may email you and say, hey, I want you to do this, or I don't want you to do that, or here's a bunch of information you need to know. The death now for open meeting law is the reply all button. Don't reply all to emails when, when you get commission emails, because you're having, at that point, you're having a meeting. Other than, I mean, and you don't need to respond, got it, acknowledged, received, don't need to do that, we know you got it. If you have a question, reply, not reply all. That's, that's critical. I can't tell you how many times people reply all after we tell them, don't reply all, you know? If I sent an email out today to a, a, a city council, or a commissioner or a board saying, hey, just a reminder on open meeting law violations, please don't reply all, and inevitably, I'll get somebody to go, reply all, yeah, I understand. Okay? So, again, it's just, for some reason, it's just so easy to reply all, or people are so used to it. So, on emails, don't reply all, that's, that's the, that's the easiest way to avoid open meeting laws violations. So, so again, you can have meetings in person like this, you can have meetings virtually like, like the three, three commissioners had prior to this, you have virtual meetings, intentional virtual meetings. You can have unintentional virtual meetings, too, like by way of email, or by way of, of phone calls. So, again, avoid those, avoid those, those pitfalls that you, that are fairly easy to fall into. And then last but not least, I'll, I'll turn it over to, back to, to the planning staff. Be careful, media and social media, okay? Be careful what you say on, on social media, and, and to the media. This is one of my favorites here. Abraham Lincoln said that, right? I mean, so, be careful what you say to the media, because you will get, especially on controversial items, you will get the reporters here. Cindy Barks will be here, or somebody else from the Courier, maybe the radio stations will be here on, on the more controversial items. You have, you, you can talk to the media about the item, about, you know, about your vote. Ahead of time, you can talk, there's an exception to open meeting law, basically a First Amendment exception to open meeting law, that says you could talk to the media. The question is, just because you can, doesn't mean it's a really good thing to do, or it's wise to do. You can tell the, the reporter, I'm totally in favor of this project, I'm voting yes. And even though the rest of your commissioners know how you're going to vote, because if they read the paper, they'll see it, that's an exception to the rule for, for open meeting law. However, the problem you create when you do something like that, or if you post it on social media, if you have Facebook or whatever, is, by the way, this one here, I put this one on, this is like four, five years old, so, you know, Joe Biden. So, so the, the, the thing you got to be careful of is, is if you, if you tell people in advance of the meeting how you're going to vote, what does that tell the public? That their comments don't really matter. So you got to be careful about, you may, and it's okay, it's not a conflict of interest to have a predisposed idea of how you're going to vote, whether it's based on your philosophy, or whether it's based on your beliefs, or, or whatever it is. You can, you can have a, I'm voting for this thing, I know, I don't care what anybody says. You could have, that's okay. It's not, from a legal standpoint. But, but we try and at least create the appearance to the public that we take into consideration their comments before we commit to a vote. So we don't count votes, we don't try and straw-pull other commission members, how are you going to vote, how are you going to vote? We don't want to do that. So we just, we have to be careful about when we're talking to the media, or, or using social media, if you use social media, to, to make comments and, and, and predictions and things like that, because again, it's not, it may not be an open meeting law violation, but it appears that, that the, the deck, the, the, the deck's already been dealt for, for items. So you want to sort of just hear what the applicant has to say, hear what the staff has to say, hear what the public has to say, have your debate here, and then, and then you vote on, you know, up or down, or continue it or get more information, or whatever it is you decide to do. Question?
Yes, thank you.
That's George Lee, by the way.
Thank you, I'm George Lee. I just want to clarify, because you mentioned the three of us, there were three of us talking before this meeting started. Is there anything illegal or questionable about that?
Not illegal technically. But what we advise, when we go into the sort of the more in-depth presentation, what we advise is that, is that particularly on items that have, you know, a large attendance or that are controversial, you want to, you want to confine your conversations about the subject matter to when it's on the agenda, when it, you know, when it falls on the agenda. So you have two or three items, talk about that item when it falls on the agenda. You don't want to have a pre-discussion about the substance of the item prior to it falling on the agenda. You want to try and avoid that. So technically, what you did isn't, isn't violation of open meeting law, but again, we, we have, we're concerned about public perception of openness, and, and that the public's business is being done in public. So that's why we also encourage people, put your phones away, don't sit there and text, because you'd be amazed how, how noticeable that is, if you don't already, when, when you're texting back there on your phone, particularly if, and I've seen this, not, not at our council members, but I've seen other county councils where two council members are texting, and nobody knows if they're texting to each other, or just, hey, pick up some milk on the way home, kind of texting. Don't know if it's innocuous, or if people are talking with each other. But again, the perception from the public is, what are those two people talking about? Why don't they talk about it in public? So again, we want all of your discussion to be public, open, and available to, to the public, whether they're here in person or here virtually, to hear what you have to say.
So it's best to avoid just the three of us, even if we're talking about the weather, to not do it if we're in chambers?
Well, if you're going to talk about the weather, talk about it loud enough so people know what you're talking about. Again, I, I, it sounds like I'm joking, but still, if, if, if you're going to, if you're sitting there, you know, and again, I, doing this for a number of years, you see people whispering with each other, it creates suspicion. People have a good and healthy suspicion of government, you know? And so we don't want to sort of encourage that suspicion any more than we have to. And so whispering, and going into the corner and talking, who knows what you're talking about? But that's the question, what are they talking about? Why are they working? And, and even with applicants, you know, we, we have this sort of saying when we deploy, be friendly and don't, but don't make friends. So when applicants come up, certainly be friendly, but again, you have, but treat the public, whether you agree with, or the public agrees with you, or the public disagrees with your position, you got to treat those people the same way as you're treating the people who agree with you. You know, you try and avoid being, you know, being rude, or, or, or being, you know, having, when the public comes up and comment, you know, you just, so, because people want to be treated, they want to be hurt. So kind of, and it's really, that's not a legal issue, it's just from experience. You know, you just want to have people feel like they're welcome to come and approach, petition the government, and tell them what they think, because inevitably, what happens is, is you're going to, and I'll, we'll get into this issue later, but you're going to have items where you're going to vote in favor of something, where 100 people are going to come into the room, and 99 are going to be against it. And their immediate response is, you don't listen to us. And the reality is, is yeah, we heard everything you said, we just disagree with you. So there's a big difference. But those kinds of discussions in the back kind of create that perception that they, they've already made their decision. So that's why I say, when you, if you talk to the media ahead of time, or you use social media ahead of time, should be very careful about what, you know, basically, if you can avoid talking about an item ahead of time, do that. And then the last, lastly, in terms of media, after the decision is made, after the commission votes and sends the recommendation on to the council, your job's done. And George will get into this more, your job is done, you did your job. So whether the council agrees with you and follows your recommendation, or does something differently, you did what you're supposed to do. You made a recommendation to the council, and council makes its decision based on what it's supposed to do, which oftentimes involves a lot more issues and items than what's fairly narrow in land use. So I would suggest to try and avoid post-decision-making comments to the media, whether it's social media or, or traditional media, once you made your vote, if you, if you're on the, on the sort of, if it's a, if it's a five to two, or four to three, and you, you didn't get, you know, you, you lost the vote, hey, you did what you could to try and convince the other commission members, your job's done. Move on, don't, don't sort of be bitter, you know, about it, try and just deal with it, and, you know, and let, and let the process work, because that's, because it does work. I can tell you, it does work here, it does work in almost every place I've been, it works. So, so even post-decision-making comment, post-decision comments are sort of discouraged, because, not that you don't have a legal right to make a comment, it's just, we just discourage them, because, you know, once your job's done, you got to move on to the next, next issue.
One of the things that we have a policy of doing here is, if you are on a minority on a vote, we generally will give you an opportunity to tell us why, and we include that information in the staff reports to those accounts.
Right.
So they know why you voted no, or why you voted yes, whichever end of it is. So they get the recommendation of the, the full body, and then we tell them why those who voted the other way voted that way. So we try to make sure they understand why we did what we did.
Right. Okay, so. George has a scheduled break, but I'm going to turn it over to Bryn.
John, I have one question for you. Tom Hutchison here. Do you have any thoughts on the actual language that's being used? Are there, are there, are there places you don't want to, to go? Are there, is there a case to be made for over-embellishing something that, that puts the city in a bad spot later? Or, I'm concerned about the...
My, my approach to things from, from a legal standpoint, and I'll just tell you what, what works and doesn't work in my experience is, like, if I'm writing a pleading, or making an argument to a judge, and I use a bunch of hyperbole and a bunch of exaggerations, it's, it does, it, it has, it's not convincing whatsoever. You know, sticking to the facts, using, you know, using plain language, sticking to the facts, making your arguments, but yeah, but over-embellishing hyper, and hyperbole and exaggerations, really, I, I would tell you, it, it probably makes your argument seem weak, or less effective, than just sticking to why you like something or don't like something, and, and, and avoiding those sort of over-exaggerations, over-embellishments, you know, and if you've heard, the world is coming, if we approve this, the world is coming to an end, kind of comments. I mean, those don't, I will tell you, those don't work, I think, with, with, they don't, they aren't convincing. Just in, as a general rule, they aren't convincing to people who you're trying to convince to agree with you. You know, if you're trying to convince someone to agree with you, you got to use facts and rational argument. This is a rational group of people, your decisions are, have a rational basis, they aren't, they aren't meant to be, you know, emotional irrational decisions. So I, I would, I would, again, not, not, not legal advice, we're just sort of practical advice, make your best argument. This is not Fox News or CNN, we're not talking heads yelling over each other, we do things in a very diplomatic way, very cordial, we do things very organized, we take turns, and, as you see from council meetings, we, it's very, you know, when we have public comment, people fill out a card, they come up, they're called up, it's, it's just done very, it's very, very well, we have time limits on people. So, and we try, and again, we try and encourage people to make your best argument, or ask questions, to try and, you know, the public or, or, or the commission, your job is to basically explain why you're voting the way you're voting. After, after you get your questions answered, you don't have to, but it's not a bad thing to say, I'm going to vote no, or I'm going to vote yes, and here's why. And it's not because the world's coming to an end if I vote no, or yes. It's because I think we need this, or we don't need that. Whatever the, whatever your rationale is for, for your decision, perfectly fine to explain. But I would agree that, that over-embellishing probably makes your argument look weak. Anything else?
Thank you, sir.
One second while we requeue up our PowerPoint. Obviously, we had plugged in a break anticipating that City Attorney Palladini would be long-winded, per usual. So at this point, I'll offer a break, if you all would like one. If you wouldn't, we can, we can wait until a little bit later in the training. Up to you all, though. Anybody need a break right now? Keep going. Okay, let's, let's see if we can get this rolling again. If we can't, we're going to mandate a break. We're getting more proficient at this technology, but every time we have a meeting, it's an interesting experience. Middle one? No? Did we get booted? Let's see if it will. Further down. And it's moving? Okay, commissioners. Bryn Stottler, Director of Community Development, we wanted to just simply point out who all of our planning staff are, you have already met some of them. Mr. Worley, our planning manager, obviously. Our community planner, Tammy DeWitt, will be presenting later in the training, but she is in the room. Tammy, could you raise your hand? Thank you. Another member of our planning team is Michelle Chavez, who is not in the room this morning, but she oversees our CDBG program. not in the room this morning, but she oversees our CDBG program, which is a function of our planning division. CDBG funding comes from HUD every year, in an approximately similar amount, about $250,000, and we run in a competitive grant program to allocate that, those funds to different organizations and applicants in our community who further the, the needs and, and benefits of that program. You'll hear more about that some later date. Kaylee Nunez, who you've heard calling for the vote, is actually operating the Zoom from her, or operating her portion of the Zoom from her office this morning. But normally, she sits up here on the dais with you all, so you'll be meeting her in person, if you haven't already, at a future meeting. And then this summer, we actually have a planning intern, her name is Kimberly Blanco, and I believe that she's auditing the meeting from outside the room as well. She is a, an urban planning student at Cal State Northridge. She grew up in Prescott. She reached out to us to see if we could accommodate some summer coursework for her. And Cal State Northridge later terminated their summer coursework program, but we managed to get her to come and work with us anyway, for the experience. So she's getting a full-blown example of what it's like to work in a planning and building department, and we're having her do all sorts of fun stuff. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about the general plan. And if you're a, what I would call a legacy member, or an incumbent member, you probably have one of these printed, that you refer to from time to time. Advance the slide, that's what it looks like for our viewers. If you're one of our new members, we've probably given you a thumb drive that includes this general plan in total. If you prefer a paper copy, we're happy to provide that. We are trying to transition more to electronic modeling, and on every level. But this general plan was adopted by the voters of our community in 2015. So we'll talk about a little bit, a little bit about the statutory basis.
It's also available on the city website.
That is correct. Thank you, Commissioner Lizelle. It is also available in total on the city website, as well as some of the mapping that is included in this document. The general plan requirement for update of every 10 years came out of the Growing Smarter legislation, Arizona Resigned Statutes is noted up there on the slide. That legislation initiated in 1998, and was updated in 2000, and again in 2002. So it mandated that general plans for cities and towns, and counties as well, different title, but counties as well, have to establish a general plan, and have to update their general plan at least once every 10 years. So updating the general plan is no small feat. It takes about a year to 18 months to actually work through the entire process of rewriting the general plan. We'll talk about how we're gonna get going on that in a slide or two. So, the general plan statute establishes the common criteria that cities and towns must use, and include, and incorporate into their general plans. It also mandates a requirement for public participation. The city of Prescott historically has utilized a committee approach, an assembly of perhaps some of the commission, certainly planning staff, city staff. Mr. Baines was in the, in the room a moment ago, our recreation director, and he certainly provided input to that general plan with his trail planning, and other uses of city open space. But it's very important to note that we do assemble a large committee. We have the committee work together for, again, about a year to 18 months to generate this general plan, and eventually, it lands on ballot, and the residents of our community vote. Here's a nice graphic that sort of depicts the main elements of a general plan. Obviously, we're talking about land use. We're talking about growth areas, and where our community is going to grow. I think one thing that we always sort of tend to state is that it's, maybe I state it, it's not whether we grow, it's how we grow. So the general plan is the 30,000-foot view that informs how we grow. The Land Development Code, which we'll hear about a little bit later in our training process, is more of the minute details of how we grow. As you can see, we also encompass environmental planning, open space requirements, and the use of open space for recreational pursuits, community quality, so just those, those sort of soft elements that create a very quality community. Water resources is always part of that discussion, and economic development, obviously. We care about our business community, we want to enhance our business community, and the way that we determine our growth pattern for the future should incorporate elements that facilitate economic This is too small to really under, to really be able to visually comprehend what's going on here, but this is our general plan land use map. And whenever we have potential annexations, we have to analyze the map and determine whether a general plan amendment is required, and there are certain triggers for that. We'll probably be talking about that later this summer, when we, when we are looking at a couple of the annexations that are in the pipeline. But this map is what we rely upon during the adoption period that this general plan is in effect, and any significant changes to that general plan map have to come before you and the council for approval. As I mentioned, the city of Prescott assembles a committee of local residents, people who are interested, and they may come from many different walks, and experience levels. It could have nothing to do with land use, it could have more to do with those, those soft community elements that we'd like to see in our community. But we assemble a really good hybridized version of, of folks that have different perspectives, and it becomes a discussion that goes on for about a year to 18 months. Again, the last general plan was approved by the voters in 2015. Approximately 80%, I believe, a little higher than that, of voters voted to approve our general plan as presented. And with that, I'm gonna hand it over to, unless you all have questions. Questions on the general plan? All right, I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Worley, and he'll talk with you about land development code.
Thank you, Bryn. So, we've given you a book. This is the book that has all of the stuff in it you need to know in order to do your job, for the most part. The other things that we will talk about, and have talked about, are often a part of this larger book. The Land Development Code is the city's zoning code, and there are very specific requirements for particular types of developments throughout that code, that we will call to your attention when we bring agenda items to you. So if we have a particular project that needs your review and a recommendation from you, we will tell you all of the code sections that you need to look at to be able to do your review, and we will be able to answer questions that you may have, associated with that. One of the things I think important to keep in mind is, you're always gonna have questions when you start reading through codes. Unless your job is like our job, reading codes. It's not often as clear as it could be, when you're reading it from the perspective of someone who doesn't write them like we do. Always feel free to contact one of us, and ask questions prior to a meeting. We prefer to have you contact us if you have questions prior to the meeting, because it gives us an opportunity to go into the code, find that particular section that may be questionable, and provide you a clear explanation before we're in here. Sometimes, because I've been doing this a long time, I can do it off the top of my head, but the preference is for me to look at the book, at the same section you have a question about, and try and answer your question that way. More accurate, better answers. So don't hesitate at all contacting us with questions. John talked about the potential for open meeting law issues when you're contacting each other. So if Commissioner Lee has a question, he calls Commissioner Gamboge and says, what on earth does this mean? You avoid all of those if you contact staff. We can be a conduit for you to talk to each other, because we will do it in a, in a fashion that meets the open meeting law requirements. So anytime you have a question about what's going on, we're available for that. Sir?
And I just wanna support that. I, many times, when I'm going through the materials in the meetings, I'll have a question, and I go to staff, and, and it gives them time to do a deep dive, and get me the answer I need to make a good decision. So I support that totally.
Thank you. It also gives us an opportunity to do one other thing. Very often, the projects you see before you contain elements that are not necessarily specifically land use elements. We interact on a very regular basis with our fire department, our building department, our engineering and, and public works department. Those, those sometimes will have an impact on a project that's before you, and we will include comments from them. Those comments come from them, not from us. And if you have a question about what they mean, or what, if you need additional clarification about what they mean, we have an opportunity to go to that, that particular department, division, or whomever, and get some clarification to you prior to a meeting. You run the risk of asking an engineering question at a meeting if there's no one from engineering at our meetings. And we don't always have someone available from all of those other departments, right here, to answer a question during a meeting, unless we know ahead of time that it's an important issue. So if Chairman Michaelman calls me and says, you know, I have a major concern about where this driveway connection is, I can contact engineering, I can say, hey, we have a, we're gonna need an explanation of this, send someone to the meeting with us. And then we'll have someone here to answer your question. So two-way communication between you and us is vital for both you and us. So please don't hesitate in that regard. So back to the Land Development Code. It is a zoning code, and a subdivision code. Generally, those are two separate types of codes within state law requirements, and within many cities, they're actually adopted as separate things, separate books. We've combined it together because they overlap and interrelate to each other to a degree that it covers everything. The Land Development Code covers zoning on property, it covers the development of individual lots, how far away from a property line do you have to be, the setbacks, how much of the lot can you cover with a building or buildings. But it also includes a whole section on how to create a subdivision in the first place, how to legally take a large piece of property and break it up into developable lots, that can be approved by you, recommended by you, approved by city council, recorded with the county, and sold for development to the public. There's a whole series of steps, and you'll find, most of the sections of our Land Development Code are covered with a diagram of process in Article 9 of the code. So that's a good one for you to look at, just to find out what the steps are, where you are in the steps. Usually, there's more stuff that's happened before you get it, and more things happen after you've had it. And you can see where you are in that review process. So in Article 9, you can flip through and find subdivision plat, or rezoning, and you'll see a chart that basically shows what those steps are, and who's touched it before, and who will touch it after you. That gives you an idea of what the next steps in process may be. Not everything you do goes directly to city council. In some cases, it goes into a, a larger review process that goes to council. The vast majority of what you do goes straight from here, to the city council for some form of action. Whether it's a rezoning, or a subdivision plat approval, your recommendations go to the city council for them to take some formal and legal action to implement whatever that request is. Whether they vote yes or no, as John said, is not a reflection of your review and recommendation. The city council, and we have an item a little bit further along, and I'll talk more about this in the meeting, the city council has a series of things beyond the scope of the planning commission that they have to take into account. Your primary job is land use, and the appropriate implementation of it in Prescott. Do you have any questions at this stage? We have more steps along the way, we're gonna step through more specific parts of this that you are most likely to see, not just in the future, in the immediate future, but generally, these things are the types of things you see. Do you have a question, sir?
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering, George, and maybe it's not relevant right now, but do we have a process for variances?
Absolutely.
You do? It's, I just don't, don't know about it.
Yes. So variances are not handled by this body, they're handled by our Board of Adjustment, but the criteria, and the process, and the chart of who does what, is in the Land Development Code. So you'll find that in Article 9. You'll also find that in Article 8 of the Land Development Code, each of the boards and commissions that generally affect some portion of the Land Development Code are listed off with some of their duties. So there's information in there about what the Board of Adjustment, for instance, should take into consideration when they're doing their job. So that's another section you may want to look at for basic familiarization. Article 9's gonna be better for you. And then when we bring things to you, we were, we're gonna call out very specific sections of the code, and say, look at this one, it says the minimum lot size has to be. Look at this one, maximum building height is. And we'll be very clear about which sections you need to look at. And if we're not, ask us. We can do that for you.
George, I have a housekeeping question.
Certainly.
And I don't remember the answer to this, that's why I'm asking it.
Just in general, we recommend good housekeeping.
This case here, Mr. James is asking for an annexation. Is there a fee that he has to pay to, to go through this process?
That's actually a good question. I, and it's not something we normally talk about, because we deal with it on the administrative side. Almost everything that we do has some level of cost recovery built into it. If an applicant comes to us and asks for something, the city council has determined that it is not up to all of the other residents of Prescott to pay for that. So we charge an application fee to offset our time, so that you aren't paying part of my time to do an annexation for Mr. Hutchinson. So almost everything has a fee of some form. And some fees are very large, and some fees are not so large.
And that fee includes the price of these large maps, and things that be...
It does, yes. Yeah, and often, if we have hard copies like this, we require the applicant to provide us the large maps. So, part of this process, and I've already stepped across the line into this slide, it's very hard for me to stick to a slide presentation. The role of the Planning and Zoning Commission, in most cases, is to review a project based on Land Development Code criteria, and to make a recommendation as to appropriateness of land uses. And those land uses are pretty much all associated with our zoning code and our general plan. Bryn talked to you about a general plan land use map, that's the foundation, and on top of that, you put the zoning, and the zoning is the day-to-day operational piece that implements it. So we, 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 one of the things that we do regularly with you, is to bring you the land use that we think is appropriate. That's a staff opinion. Generally, it's based on fact, it's based on requirements and codes, it's based on our research. But often, other things come into play. As with you making a recommendation to the city council, and them taking more into effect, you take more into consideration than we do, because you take public comment into consideration at your public meetings, that we don't get at a staff level. So your, part of your role is to vet a project, and to publicly vet a project through our open meetings, so that you take information in that we may not have. You also can make recommendations to the city council, that may go beyond the specific, exact wording of the code. Generally, we don't do that. If it says nine in the code, I'm enforcing nine, that's my job. It could be that when something gets to you, it may need some flexibility, and your recommendation can go to council and say, it says nine, but we think 10's better. That's something that lets, that lets you have some influence in the council's decision. Now, that doesn't let you waive requirements of the code, but there may be ways that council can modify code provisions as part of their process. They need to hear from you, particularly recommendations with some technical basis behind them. A lot of that comes from staff, and through you to them, but they also need to hear other things. Each of you bring a background that, that may influence a decision, may influence the discussion of the decision. So it's important to have bodies like this one provide information and support to a city council on land use-related decisions. Usually, those are the biggest decisions cities make. So that's something that's important. Your role is very important in the process. We're gonna talk about several very specific types of things that you likely will see in the upcoming months. Some of these things you see regularly, so we'll point those out. Others you see periodically, and those periodic things often are very hot topics. Annexations are somewhat rare, periodic things that happen. So we'll, we'll talk a little bit about that in a moment. Annexations are the addition of property from the county into the city's corporate limits, and subject to the city's rules and regulations. So moving property out of one jurisdiction into another, it's almost always out of a county and into a city, or into a town, have very specific requirements in the state law, and you will be subject to a thorough, repetitious rendering of those requirements by staff, every single time one of these comes before you, because we want to make it absolutely clear to you, as well as the public who may be in attendance, either remotely, or, or physically in attendance, what your... physically in attendance, what your parameters are. None of us operate without guides, without guidelines, without curbs or without walls that stop us from doing things. And codes and the Arizona revised statutes provide those things to us. So we're going to help you know what your boundaries are for decision-making in advance of the meeting, in the staff report. We try and be thorough in those staff reports to, to set that stage for you. So you don't come in here going, "Well, what am I supposed to do?" You never should come in here saying, "What should I, what am I supposed to do?" So if you do, talk to us. We're also going to talk a little bit about rezonings and general plan amendments and how those things affect you. They are probably the second most common thing you see. A rezoning request is, is a very usual request to the city. Preliminary and final plats are the most common thing you will see. That's the creation of a legal ability to create lots, sell those lots, and develop those lots. And then cell towers, we're going to touch on that because we have a couple of upcoming issues. One specifically related to a cell tower that is a periodic event before you, but they're always anxiety-ridden for, for the public, for staff, and sometimes for you guys.
George, before we get into that...
Certainly.
Shall we check to see if anybody wants to take a break?
This would be a great time.
Yeah. Why don't we just take a break for about five minutes?
You totally confused already?
Absolutely.
He said you were in the...
Yeah.
Seventy-one, seventy-two, I was there.
It's military.
It was misery.
I love it. Oh, that's great.
Exactly right.
And then I have a cousin that was... Three generations who served as...
Baby Louis.
So how did you...
A little bit of each of the sections on...
I was in Oregon.
All right. You got him.
Twenty years. Retired at Redstone Arsenal. And we live in Prescott.
That was my first assignment at Redstone.
Really?
I was on the, there is an anti-ballistic support safeguard. I grew up in the military. I've never had been a slave to the earth.
Right, yeah. Seven years. Seventy-nine, it's from Redstone. Harbin.
I always had the water. And actually, they would just...
The influence.
For higher ups.
This is during Vietnam and I've already been overseas. Yeah, it's just like, you know, when I went down to... When I went there, there were three...
We got a lot of...
(coughing)
Just about...
(coughing)
Yeah, it's just like, you know, when I went down to...
Yeah, they were very...
When I went there, there were three...
I miss that. It was a three man...
We got a lot of...
(coughing)
Just about...
(coughing)
It was a toss-up.
This is during Vietnam and I've already been overseas.
So we're here.
Yeah.
I really believe in the memory.
Aunt has to jump over and pick my screen up.
Yeah, it's just like, you know, when I went down to...
Yeah, they were very...
When I went there, there were three...
I miss that. It was a three man...
We got a lot of...
We got a lot of...
(coughing)
We got a lot of...
(coughing)
We got a lot of...
(coughing)
Yeah, it's just like, you know, when I went down to...
Yeah, they were very...
When I went there, there were three...
I miss that.
It was a three man...
We got a lot of...
We got a lot of...
(coughing)
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 Yeah, it's just like, you know, when I went down to...
Yeah, they were very...
When I went there, there were three...
I miss that.
It was a three man...
We got a lot of...
(coughing)
We got a lot of...
(coughing)
My staff has unmuted me, which is I'm not used to. Annexations are one of the things that you don't see very often but are very important for review and recommendation by this body. For a couple of steps in the process, primarily, as we talked earlier, the really unusually small annexation you dealt with this morning is not a typical annexation. John mentioned in his discussion with you, they almost always involve rezonings and subdivision plats. Often they involve amendments to the general plan, the city's general plan. Those are the more common aspects of annexations. So an annexation legally is to take property out of the county, in our case, out of the county and into the city, and then apply all of the city's rules and regulations to that property. That includes its land use designation, general plan land use designation, its zoning, and then any other criteria we may have in city codes that affect property. We have property maintenance requirements. We have a limit as to how many cars without wheels you can have in your front yard. We have limitations on what and how you build roads or utility infrastructure. All of those become effective once you're annexed into the city. The state laws anticipate that county properties bounding cities on the outside edges of cities will want to annex for various reasons. The most common reason is access to central services. We have a water and sewer system. The county does not provide a water and sewer system. Those are often the primary reason why someone wants to develop. The secondary is because we have those water and sewer systems, you can annex property in and develop it at a higher intensity, more units per acre than you could in the county where they don't have those services. So the annexation process involves a review of all of those impacts. This body doesn't necessarily look at everything. We do other impact analyses as well. But you often are involved in the land use aspects. How does this affect the existing property nearby? How does this affect property that's in the city that's not being directly bounded by the annexation but maybe is affected by the additional traffic that's created by a development proposed to go with an annexation? So sometimes you will have a long list of criteria to look at, and sometimes it'll be a shorter list. Today's list was one item. Most of the time you'll have five, six major things that you need to look at. We will lay those out for you in the staff report that says, this needs to be talked about. Here's what we know right now. And generally, you're not getting a staff opinion. You're getting staff data when we write a staff report. We'll say, this adds this many acres to the city. It will affect this many adjacent lots. It will add this many lane miles of road. It will add this requirement for additional units being attached to the city's water and sewer system. They almost always come with other things attached to them, like a rezoning to mostly a higher density. It's rare to annex property in that doesn't increase its density, again, because we have those central services. So the rezoning has its own set of review criteria, and Tammy's going to talk a little bit about zoning in a couple of minutes. Those criteria have to be addressed at the same time. You will find that you will have an annexation as item one, and a rezoning as item two, and a general plan amendment as item three on your agendas. That is a very common thing to see when we have an annexation in process. So each of those steps will be listed separately, but we generally talk about all of it at one time because you need to understand all of it in order to vote on any part of it. Then we will ask you to vote one at a time, just for clarity and legal purposes. But those things are interrelated to one another, and we will talk about all of those as part of our presentation to you. These are opportunities for you to really ask us questions because we deal with something on an internal basis that may not be... We may see it so often that we don't think to tell you about it. So this is a time to say, wait a minute, what on earth does this mean? These are great times to do that, sir.
A legal question. You can probably answer it faster than I do.
I don't know. At this point, we're neck and neck.
So you mentioned the three items on the agenda. We're on item one, but I have a question about item three. Are we able to discuss it on either one?
Our usual rules here allow us to discuss the whole thing. Your individual actions on each item would occur with each item.
Vote is different.
Right. Because things are so interrelated, it's really impossible and not talk about the eventual zoning when you're talking about the proposed annexation. So we intermingle that for discussion purposes. You take separate actions. By taking those separate actions, you meet the legal requirements for following an agenda, letting the public know what you're going to do.
In short, it's one agenda item.
One agenda item.
That was quicker than George.
I was worried when he said "in short."
George?
Yes, sir.
One of the items that staff will tell us about is what the impact is on water. And water is a very sensitive subject here in Prescott. My friends in Singapore, I think, are on day 74 of what they call the circuit breaker. Telling us that it uses this many gallon feet of water per unit time doesn't give us a frame of reference of where we are against the total water use, and is it on the incline or is it level? So I would lobby somehow, if you could frame that, to give us an idea, not only what the impact is in terms of rote usage, but maybe as a percent, or where does that put us in the city's projections of water usage?
Okay. We can do a generalized information to you. Water allocation has traditionally been held by the council and is often part of those things that are not specifically land use that we were talking about that is within your purview. So while we may mention water usage in the presentation to you, we are never going to ask you to make a vote based on water usage. That's not land use, and your primary job is land use. Our city council has a policy that was adopted a few months ago specifically on how they determine the appropriateness of water usage and the allocation of water to new developments, whether they are through annexation or revisions or new developments already existing inside Prescott. Water usage at this level is going to be a cursory comment to you. It is being very thoroughly monitored by the city council through their water policy. So we may not spend very much time talking to you about water. It is a consideration, and it is a strong consideration when the city council gets it. So that's something to keep in mind. There are a couple of topics that we generally don't get into too much depth with you. We'll tell you about requirements for water and sewer system, but we're not going to get into the approval process that the Public Works Department uses because of their set of codes that are adopted to control those. So we're not going to say these have to be 12-inch pipes. We're going to say it's this many lines. Public Works has reviewed and made their recommendation. So again, your purview is primarily land use and the impacts on land use, either in the annexation or in the adjacent property already in the city. Good question. Thank you. Are there any other questions at this point? I thought it seemed like, because John said "in short," I'm talking too much about this. Annexations are very complicated. We will provide you a huge amount of data as part of that process so you can make a good recommendation. But if you have any more specific questions at this point, I'd be happy to answer those. We can step through the rest of these. Again, when projects show up on the agenda, we want to hear from you, and we want to be able to provide you the information you need to make decisions.
Can I add something about on annexation before I move on? John Palladini here. So in some annexations, the city does what's called the pre-annexation development agreement. And that's another one of those votes that the council will make after you make your recommendations on annexation and zoning and maybe a subdivision plat and whatever else. Council will look at things like water and a pre-annexation agreement and all the other sort of land use specific items. As a matter of law, you don't have a... There's no requirement that the planning commission vote on or address the pre-annexation development agreement. But as practice, to give you kind of scope and context, we will probably bring you at least a summary during these annexation discussions, particularly the ones that are more complex that have pre-annexation agreements. We will most likely bring you, in working with your planning staff, your community development staff, to bring you kind of a brief on, these are the things we're talking about in a pre-annexation development agreement. So you kind of can see the big picture. It helps you make your decision about the particulars you're going to vote on. So just want to let you know that in the past, what we've done is we've brought pre-annexation development agreements just to kind of brief you on those, just so you see kind of the big picture of the thing. But as George was saying, your vote on your recommendation on annexations and the zoning, proposed zoning or subdivision plat really can't be based on, I don't like this project because it can use too much water. That's outside of... So you get the information for your own sort of understanding of the project, but you have to kind of make your decisions based on what the land development code tells you you can make it on, and so staff will lay those out for you. But again, so just so you have a big picture, we're going to probably bring those to you. And I'll tell you in two items coming up. The AED, when that gets to you, we're going to bring you, you know, we're going to talk to you about the... Everybody knows about the letter of intent. We'll come and talk to you about a little bit about that so you kind of see the big picture. And then there's another project coming up in the July timeframe called Stringfield Ranch that's going to be brought back before the commission to kind of refresh memories or introduce it to people. And we'll talk to you about what the pre-annexation development agreement sort of talks about and looks like, just so you kind of see the big picture.
Thank you, John.
So if we're... Why isn't that advancing? There we go. So I had this just to show you, but since it's so close with what we were doing before, I was going to show you sort of the kind of requirements we would have for an annexation. The types of information you would have would be a map like this, along with any zoning, along with the things that we talked to you this morning about. You'll just get more of it with larger annexations. All right. So I'm going to turn this over to Tammy to talk to you a little bit about rezonings and general plan amendments, which often go together. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman and members of the commission. Tammy Dewitt, community planner at the city of Prescott. So we're going to talk about rezonings. Rezonings are pretty common somewhat in the cities. So what we have is usually somebody will bring forward a project, and we would go through a pre-application conference with them with all our technical reviewing agencies. We give them input and direction on what the next steps are. And sometimes it's a rezoning, either if it's a single-family residential to a different density of single-family, or to multifamily, or from one type of commercial to a different type of commercial. These are ones that they may have to change the zoning or densities or the category of the zoning. What we do is when we see these projects, we actually look at our general plan land use map that Bryn had on the screen, and we compare it. We're like, does this meet this category per our general plan? And if it does, then we just keep moving forward, and they don't need to do a general plan amendment. They just keep moving forward and come through the public hearing process. If it does not conform with the general plan, we kind of talk to them about it. What are some things that may bring it into a category? Or we move forward with a general plan amendment. In the back of the general plan, there is criteria for a major and then minor general plan amendments. Major done once a year. There's a whole lot of criteria. They're usually for bigger projects. For more smaller projects, there's minor that move forward with the rezoning request. It is a legislative act that can only be approved by city council, but we do bring it before you to look at the land use. Is it in conformance with the neighboring zonings? Is it a spot zoning? Or is there other criteria that we may need to look at? But we do ask for your recommendation. We do send notices out to the surrounding property owners. We post the property to meet our... And post in the paper to meet our statutory requirements, and then we bring it before you. It is a public meeting, either a hybrid version like we're doing now, to allow the public to come in remotely or in person. So I think there's really much else. I'm a little shorter than George, not just in short height, but verbally. Do you have any questions about rezonings? And as we bring those forward, we'll bring you all the information in our staff reports. And like George said, if you have any questions, please ask ahead of time because we may miss something that we're, like he said, we're used to seeing that we didn't catch, and maybe something that the rest of the commission may have questions about. And we can bring that up in our presentation during the meeting and hopefully answer your questions beforehand or during the meeting. Anything else on rezoning and general plan amendments? No? No, that was easy. Okay. Preliminary and final plats. So anytime someone wants to create four or more parcels, or if they're creating a road when they split a parcel, they have to go through our subdivision process. What we look at, are the lots legal parcels? Are they going to meet the zoning requirements? Or are they coming in with a planned area development? With a planned area development, a PAD plat, basically it's the same density allowance, but they may be smaller lots with reduced setbacks to preserve some open space, or there's slopes that they want to preserve, or rockout croppings, or something like that. So those would be come forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a preliminary plat. Preliminary plats do come before the Planning and Zoning Commission for a recommendation. We do not advertise. We don't post the property. But if it is a bigger project, a few months ago, some of you may remember Bradshaw Hills, we do let kind of the neighborhood know what's going on because there may be some people impacted with mostly if it's a reduced... A PAD with reduced setbacks. Then the preliminary plat will go to the council for approval, and then they'll come forward with a final plat that just goes to the city council. By the time the preliminary plat comes before you, it's gone through all our technical reviewing agencies, between the engineering, the surveyor, a few rounds with our surveyor usually, to make sure that all the legal boundaries and that it meets all our requirements. So when it comes before you, you're looking at the land use, and sometimes not even the land use, like we saw with the mini storage a couple of months or two ago, that basically was just a plat to condoize. So it's an existing structure, and they're coming in and condoizing it so they could sell individually. That's an outlier type of project that you may see. Sometimes it's just a new... Most of them are new housing developments we see for all the subdivisions going in. And that the final plats are just approved because that's a legislative act by the city council. But like I said, by the time we bring a preliminary plat in front of you, it's pretty vetted through our reviewing agencies. But mostly with the PADs, we want to make sure it is still compatible, that we give a chance for public input on a reduced... Mostly when there's reduced setbacks. But the density is still the same. That's a kind of short version of it again. Am I missing anything, George? So when a final plat comes before the city council, we do make sure that it's in substantial conformance with the preliminary plat. There is criteria that was adopted by the city council that determines what substantial conformance is. So we have some direction of staff to make sure that we're looking at that. So they may have some flexibility once they start getting into their engineering. Because of the preliminary plat, it's just a paper plat. By the time they get to their final plat, they're starting to do their engineering and really fine-tuning it. So we do have some... They have some flexibility to kind of make some adjustments as long as it is still determined to be in substantial conformance. I didn't mention Prop 207 for rezonings, huh? Yeah. Okay. So are there any questions about preliminary plats or final plats? Yes?
I'd like to make a comment. I would encourage the members of the commission that when we're looking at an item, we may have maps, we may have pictures of it, but going out there and seeing that can give you a better feel for what's going on, and it can be very helpful on this. So I would encourage considering that. As we do that, though, we need to respect the private property owners out there, too, on that.
And if it's a bigger project that's coming forward for a rezoning or annexation, you know, we sometimes do field trips to take you out there, either as a whole commission or in groups, depending on what we can do. Subject to open meeting laws. We make sure to advertise and post and that we're doing those, since you are in a quorum and it does become a public meeting.
When I was on the board of adjustments, like you were saying, Mr. Chairman, I always tried to avoid the applicant if you're looking at that, just, you know, you're driving by and looking at it, but trying to avoid that interaction.
And we do try to bring pictures. I go out and take pictures of the property. A picture says a thousand words, and as much as I can. And we do give the imagery of the property. We are getting updated imageries to give you more than 2017 because areas have changed significantly since 2017. But we try to provide as much information visually, too, as we move these forward.
Thank you, Tammy.
You're welcome.
Informative and concise.
He gets the fun one.
Back to this. Okay, so last, maybe least, not least, actually you have one after this. So cell towers, as we kind of alluded to earlier, you're going to have a cell tower item that's going to come before you. It's essentially a regulatory decision-making process. When cell towers go on private property, it has to go through a special use permit process per the city's land development code. If you've sort of been tracking what went on at the city council, when cell towers go onto city-owned property, it's essentially a business transaction. Does the city want to lease the property to the cell tower operator? And it's essentially done in the form of a lease. And so for the most part, the regulatory process is circumvented because it's done on public property or public right-of-way. And we've got a... I don't know the number, but we have a significant number of cell towers on city-owned property, which is, I think, in a lot of ways preferred. So let me just give you a real shorthand version of what the decision-making looks like when it comes to cell towers. So first question is, does the cell tower, the proposed cell tower application, meet the zoning requirements? And this is a generic decision matrix. This is not specific to Prescott. If some cities allow for cell towers in, say, industrial zones under certain conditions without a use permit or without any kind of approval process, in that case, if there is no public process, use permit requirement, condition use permit, or special use permit, and the cell tower meets the zoning requirements, then the city has to approve the cell tower. Again, usually those are situations where a lot of bigger cities have industrial areas, and there are certain development standards, height or camouflage. As long as it does that, it's approved and it's all done. No public process. Prescott's land development code says all cell tower applications have to get a special use permit. So a proposal to put in a cell tower doesn't automatically meet the land development code without a use permit, so you go through this analysis. Let me show you what... This is something that I would encourage in the next week or so for all of you to maybe read, and you'll get a briefing of this and a summary of this. This is Land Development Code 2.4.49. This is the city's cell tower land development code section. And what it says in the very... The preamble is that a special use permit is required for all cell towers in the city. And then it goes through, and it talks about the purpose. So there's these sort of general statements. And then as many pages to this, and it goes through, then there are specific, you know, specific objective things that have to be met, you know, galvanized or, you know. So those are things that, you know, your staff is going to go through, and they're going to tell you it meets these requirements. And there are many, like I said, many pages, site development standards, engineering standards, those kinds of things. The big one that you'll address for the most part are the Section A, A1 through 9. And those are sort of standards that we would call subjective-objective. In other words, does the proposed cell tower location protect residential areas from adverse impacts? That's sort of a subjective decision-making that you have to make when you analyze an application. But at the same time, you're required to sort of apply objective standards to that. It can't be sort of arbitrary and under some concept, oh, I don't like cell towers in residential at all, so therefore, no cell tower in a residential zone is going to meet this standard. You have to kind of apply this reasonable person standard to your analysis. In the same way...
What would be an example of an adverse impact?
Could affect your view shed is an adverse impact. I mean, it doesn't have to be... It doesn't have to be a physical invasion. It could be something that affects your view shed. Now, I will tell you a couple of things. I'll get a little bit ahead. There are two things that you really don't... Should not consider. One, you can't consider by law, and that's this radio frequency emissions issue. That is mox-nix. Can't talk about that. Can't... That's not part of your decision-making matrix. So long as the applicant can avow to you that our cell tower meets the FCC standards. And that's something that, you know, they're going to come to you with some technical document that says this meets FCC standards. At that point, that part of the analysis is off the table. The other one I would suggest to you that is sort of a non-issue is what's called fall zone. People talk about, it's a 50-foot tower, and I'm within 40 feet, so therefore, this thing's going to fall on my house. Well, two things. One, these cell towers are engineered, you know, and designed, and we review that engineering and design and issue building permits so that they don't fall. And so in the history of Prescott, there hasn't, I'm aware of, a single cell tower that's ever fallen over. Now, in Kansas or Oklahoma, tornadoes will rip them out of the ground, but, you know, thankfully, we don't have those here. So the other thing you have to know about cell towers is they don't fall like a tree. They fall... They fold in on themselves or crumple down. So essentially, the fall zone is on itself if they were ever to fall for some reason based on some bad engineering or bad design. So things like, you know, adverse impacts, well, this, I'm in the fall zone. There really isn't any such thing as a fall zone when it comes to cell towers that are designed and engineered the way they are now. The other factors you want to look at, too, are, you know, there's a trade-off in our policy, our city policy about cell towers, is do you want a bunch of cell towers, or do you want fewer cell towers that are co-located with a bunch of antennas? Well, when you co-locate, you got to go higher because you got to have separation between the antennas. So sort of the policy that Prescott has and that pretty much every city has is we encourage co-location. Co-location on other, you know, with other cell towers, co-location at the high school, for instance, on top of the football field lights, there are cell towers up above those. So we encourage those co-locating, but the trade-off is, is you're going to have taller towers because you want fewer towers taller to put more antennas on each tower. We encourage... So you see the words like encouraging the joint use, encouraging users of towers and antennas to locate, to the extent possible, in areas where the adverse impact is minimal. Encouraging users to put cell towers in industrial zones, to screen, to landscape, to camouflage. So these are words that aren't hard measurable things. We're encouraging that. So and that's, again, that's where your sort of subjective decision-making comes in, and a little bit of your negotiating skills with the applicant to say, well, if you... Can you change it from a cactus to a pine tree? You know, and that's kind of a no-brainer. But can you paint it this color versus that color? Can you landscape around the base to hide the equipment at the base? Those are the kinds of things that your staff will sit there and sort of ask the applicant to do. You'll get the application by the time it's been vetted through your staff. But there's certainly nothing stopping you from asking for more camouflaging, maybe changing the siding a little. the sighting a little bit, you know, if it's this way and you think it's better to turn it, you know, 100 and, or turn it 90 degrees, for instance, you know, if that works for the, the, the tower functioning, you know, you can ask those kinds of things. And again, we're talking kind of in hypotheticals, but do, I encourage you to read or review 2.4.49 in the next week or so. I think July 9, you're getting an item to discuss, maybe a study session, maybe for voting. And again, I'll remind you, on July 14, we're doing a city council study session, a public study session on cell tower law, which will go into a little bit more detail, but I encourage you to sit through that one. So, the next decision is, since, since you can't have a cell tower in Prescott without a special use permit, you go to this question. Does a cell tower cover a significant gap in the wireless service? So, what Verizon has to show to you, when Verizon's the applicant or AT&amp;T, is, this covers a significant gap in Verizon's cell service coverage, not just generically. And they'll do an analysis that'll tell you, here's why, here's the gap, and here's the gap we're trying to cover. So, yes or no? If it, if there is no gap, you can deny this, the cell tower. I would suggest that the cell companies aren't going to bo, if there's no gap, they aren't going to bother with the expense of going through the process. So, so, you know, usually, this is, this is kind of accepted, that there is a gap in service, and so therefore, we need a cell tower in this particular location. I think, kind of going through that, the, the challenge that we have in Prescott, for instance, versus, say, Prescott Valley, is Prescott Valley, Prescott. So for the, for the record, Prescott Valley's flat, Prescott's up and down. And cell towers don't work as well when you have all these hills and valleys and holes and dips and heights, as we all know, driving through town, versus you go to Prescott Valley or down in Phoenix, you know, it's flat, the cell, the cell service, the radio service works much differently. So that's why you'll see more cell tower applications here in residential zones, because we don't have, you know, commercial zones in the way that our topography works that will provide a proper or good location to fill a gap for our residential zones, particularly in the hilly parts of town, of the city. So, you do that, that's your, that's your first analysis, and again, that's usually based on the applicant's analysis, that we have a gap and this cell tower is intended, this application intended to fill a gap. The big question then becomes this one. Is it the least intrusive means to cover the gap? There's two factors, and that is, at that location, are they doing everything they can do to camouflage, to properly site, to landscape, to basically hide it from view? If, in, in that particular location, that goes back to that land development code section. The second one, the second factor you look at is, why this location? Why is this the best location applicant for this cell tower? Have you looked at other locations? And so it's the applicant's job to, to tell you, we've looked at, you know, in this particular area, we've looked at three different locations, and we've determined that this one's the best, and here's why. And it may be a technological reason that we want to be on this hill versus the hill over there, because the hill over there is 150 feet lower, and so it doesn't provide the same amount of coverage that the hill, the applicant were, the applicant location, application location we're, we're looking at. It could be that, you know, there's a better location 150 feet away, or 150 yards away on private property, but the private property owner isn't interested in putting a cell tower on that property. So, you know, the cell tower companies don't, can't force their towers onto, to private property. That's why we work so closely with the, with, with the providers to try and encourage them to put it, put those towers on city property, on city rights away as much as possible, because it does generate revenue for the city and it also sort of takes it out of, you know, neighborhoods and things, as best we can, take it out of neighborhoods. So, if, if the application, you know, meets the zoning code in terms of all the things you look at in 2.4.49, fills a significant gap in service for that applicant, that provider, and it's the least intrusive means, and these are decisions you make, then you really have no choice but to approve that cell tower. And that's, that's a function of the Federal Communications Act, which, which balances out municipal or local government control and the need for cell service in this country, in, in, in local, local communities. So, let me give you a couple of, a couple of brief slides. So here's, there are a couple of other factors you'll get into, we don't really run into. You know, one of the factors is, is you have, you, you can't be discriminatory. You can't favor T-Mobile over AT&amp;T. We, we don't have that issue. I don't know if I've ever heard of discriminatory, at least intentional discriminatory decisions, but there have been cases where, you know, T-Mobile gets a, a use permit approved in San Diego and Verizon comes in, and they argue, our, our cell tower is similarly situated as T-Mobile, yet we got denied, therefore, it's discriminatory. Yes? Right, and now there are four, I mean, you know, but again, so, a couple of other factors to come in, reasonable period of time for, and then we're talking about the, the original cell tower application, it's about 150 days is what, is what we look at. Generally speaking, we work with the applicant. In the, in the one you're going to see coming up, it's been well over 150 days, but obviously with the COVID and all that going on, the applicant has, has sort of worked with us to, to, you know, to be, to be cooperative and allow us to go through this thing. You, you have, if you're going to deny, you know, based on these factors here, you have to have substantial reason why you're going to deny it, meaning there has to be some, you have to be able to say, I'm voting no, as a commission, we're voting no on this, and here are the reasons why. You can't, and again, it has to be those justifiable, you know, reasons why you don't, why it doesn't meet the, either it meets the city code, you don't believe it fills a gap, or it's not the least intrusive means. And then we have to provide, then if it goes to the council after that recommendation, and the council does the same thing, then the official denial goes to the applicant as, in, in writing, and we have to lay out those reasons, and then, give or take, sometimes that starts a lawsuit, sometimes it doesn't. Because what happens is, is the, the, the act authorizes the applicant to go to federal court, and it's heard on an expedited basis. So, so this is the, this is the gap analysis. Okay, so can't, can't have the, the decision you make, if you deny a cell tower, can't have the effect of prohibiting personal wireless service. It's the way people communicate nowadays. So even more important than in 1996, when the act was written, this is the, pretty much for most people, the sole way we communicate anymore. Very few people have landlines. So again, you go to the least intrusive means and, and significant gap issue, and those, and those should be addressed by the applicant, who should be here to, to talk to you about those things, as well as in your staff report, but you're certainly free to delve into those things, to really vet that question, to really push the applicant and ask the applicant, have you done, have you looked at other sites, and why aren't those other sites as good as the one you're proposing? Now, there is an option that the city can always go out and hire its own expert to say, actually, we think that your site, your site option two, which you don't like, is better, and here's why. You know, but again, it has to be within, has to be a realistic decision, and those, those analyses can be fairly costly. And we do have a shot clock issue. So, the, the gap question, it's a case-by-case. The applicant's gap is what's relevant. And then you look at, the, the two factors you look at when you're looking at gap is, how many potential users are affected by the service gap? If it's out in the middle of nowhere, which we probably really don't have here in, in the city, you know, and, and the applicant is saying, well, for future use, and this talks about potential users, so if there's a planned development, let's say we go to North Prescott, and there's a planned development that's going to have 10,000 homes, you know, and there, and there's a service gap out there, the applicant can go in and say, in advance of this, we want to put the cell tower in, because we know we're going to have 10,000 homes out here in the next X years, and therefore, we want to put the cell tower in. And there's a good reason for that, is you put the cell tower in first, and then when the home, people come out and buy their homes, the cell tower is already there. You know, it's a lot easier, you know, because then it's, you're, you're, you're on notice. To try and come in after the fact is always a challenge. And then the severity of the gap, which is, again, how, how bad is the service in, in that particular area they're trying to fill? So this is what I talked about earlier, least intrusive means, is, did they do, did they look at alternative sites? That's your first question. Why, why is this site the best site? And it doesn't mean that the other sites aren't adequate, they have to establish though, why this is the best, by some substantial amount. Did they look at design? Does it have to be 70 feet tall? Can it be 50, if that's a factor? Did they, did they screen? Did they landscape? Did they do everything they're supposed to do? And then are there different technologies? Now we have these sort of small wireless facility-type things that can be used, which are, which go on top of like light posts and stuff, you know, have they looked at that? You know, streetlight, you know, antennas can go on top of streetlights, street, uh, streetlights now. Is that, is that, was that an alternative, and why didn't you look at that? Now again, for the most part, where you get the controversy, we don't have those kinds of facilities like streetlights. You know, you have streetlights in commercial zones and industrial zones, and so generally speaking, when, when an applicant comes in and wants to put a, a cell tower in a commercial or industrial zone, you have very little comment on it. They have to go through the process, but, but most people think, well, that's an appropriate location, and there's really no, no residences around, so we're good. The challenge is always, when you put it in a residential area, to give coverage to that residential area, because there aren't any commercial zones around, then alternative technologies, at least now, really aren't, aren't available. And, and again, they may be available, but they, the applicant can look at the cost. If the cost is 10 times the amount to install these alternative, alternative technologies versus the cell tower, then they, that's part of the factor they can use to say, why it doesn't make sense to go in.
Can I add a comment?
Sure.
I think it was two, three years ago now, we had the smoke tree, on a smoke tree, our fire department was losing, they were dropping signal as they were climbing to public safety. And so you notice the cell tower that's over on, I think it was Hartway over by the Heart Institute, the Commerce Center there. And we put that cell tower in, and there was a lot of, a lot of debate about that. I know it's a public safety, and that was a pretty dense area, but our police and fire were losing total contact, they, they didn't know where to go, and they were all in shock.
I, I, I think the, I think what, what the read between the lines, the subtext, I notice, people kind of get used to it after a while. I mean, once it's there, initially, it's sort of maybe a shock to the system, but once it's there, people tend to get used to it, you know. So, the argument, I, I think one of the arguments that will, people will make is, it's going to diminish my property values. I'm not sure that's a valid analysis. I don't, I don't know if that's a valid claim, to be honest with you, because cell towers are so ubiquitous, it's like a Walgreens or a CVS, they're everywhere. So, the idea that you have a cell tower in your neighborhood, it might affect the property values of the guy right next to it, but it probably doesn't affect the overall property values of the whole neighborhood, because they're so common nowadays. So those are things that, again, if they're done right, if they're done properly, you know, you, you have a, you, you do have, we as a city do have discretion on the approval process, but it's, it's a, it's kind of a confined or defined discretion, it's not, it's not completely subjective. The other thing I want to bring up, and I'll finish with this slide, is this radio frequency emission issue. Again, as long as the cell tower applicant kind of avows to you that their tower complies with FCC regulations on radio frequency emissions, it is not a topic that you can contemplate in your decision-making. And what we tend to do historically is tell the public, we don't even want you to tell us about it, because it, it, it's a, it's a, it's a non-issue for us, you know, that we, it, you can argue till you're blue in the face about radio frequency emissions as, as a member of the public, but it's not a factor we can consider. And some, some chair, a prior chair of the commission, basically told people as, as they went down that path, hey, I'm going to cut you off, it's not a factor we can consider. What else do you have? You got your three minutes, focus on something else that we actually can consider. Because they're not wasting your time, they're sort of wasting their time trying to argue things to you that you just can't consider in this analysis. So, as much as people don't want to hear that, that's the law that we're stuck with. And, and I would suggest that we've, I don't think we've ever seen a cell town, cell tower application that, that doesn't meet the FCC regulations or highly regulated. So, that's, that's an important factor, and what I would suggest to you is this, is that we will be back during the July 9 session on this particular application, to kind of go through this again, and a little bit shorter of a timeframe, not necessarily for your benefit, for the public benefit, so they understand the parameters within which you can make your decisions, and it's not, it's not that we don't want to hear from the public, it's just we have a limited decision-making kind of authority, and those three boxes I showed you are it. And once those are, once those are, if the answer to those is yes, then you have no choice but to recommend approval. Sir?
Can you put your, your sheet up? Yeah? I found it interesting where it says in the, in the middle gap up there, in personal wireless service. Is there a distinction between personal wireless service and some other?
We're talking, what, personal wireless service is cell phones, cell service.
Well, I understand that, but I mean, is, is that the only reason that there, that you describe it as personal? Is all wireless ser, service personal?
Well, we have, for instance, no, I, I, I'm not a tactical person, but for instance, we have public safety, wireless, radio.
Yes.
That would be not considered a personal wireless service, but then again, that's, that's where we, we, we would put it on our public property and not have to go through this regulatory, the regulatory analysis we do. So there are, there are, and there are others like, there are exceptions to all of this for ham radio antennas that are completely separate type of wireless radio-type service that wouldn't, that wouldn't be regulated this. So this, when we talk about personal wireless service, it's just the sort of FCC name for cell service.
It's not just like counting noses.
What do you mean?
Of individuals. You have to have so many people that personally-
No, no, personal wireless service is cell service. Essentially, your mobile phone, cell service, that would, that would be-
Well, I understand that, but I'm, I'm just trying to say, and it's not numbers that qualify it for having a different-
It, 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 you know, it is, there is a, the, one of the factors, as I, as I showed you, is, is there a significant, let me see. So, you, you can look at the number of potential users affected by the gap. So if there's only one guy out there in the middle of nowhere- So if there's only one guy out there in the middle of nowhere, you know, it may not be a gap. That's what I kind of described earlier, you know, but if, but it's potential users. So it doesn't mean current. It means, you know, if there's a big subdivision going out there, and I'm the applicant, and I say, "Hey, we got a gap out here, and I know there are 5,000 homes going in, and I want to get my cell tower in there to cover this gap for potential users going forward." And that potential user is not something completely speculative. It's actual, a planned development of some sort, then that would, that would apply as well.
And that's what I was trying, my example, what you show up here, potential users and individuals are the same.
Right. Sorry, thank you. So, right, so personal wireless service is the cell service. The gap is how many potential users. So the wording means cell service. The gap analysis is, is what's, is it a significant number? And significant, is it defined? So it's all kind of relative, you know. In Prescott, for instance, is it, you know, Copper Basin area? How many users up there can't get cell service? And you can look at it not as a raw number, but as percentage. You know, if 67% or 80% of Verizon users in a particular area have no service, that's a significant gap. It may be 100 people, but it's a significant gap for the area. So it's not just raw number, it's percentage.
John, when we're talking about gap, are we talking about there is no cellphone service? Or it doesn't mean that Verizon customers have it, but AT&amp;T don't?
It is, it is the applicant's gap. So if Verizon's coming in and putting in a cell tower, they have to establish that they have a gap in their service, not just a generic gap in cell service altogether. So Verizon has to establish that it's their gap in service. Again, whether it's a raw number, you know, we have 1,000 users in this, in the area that's going to be covered by this, and it's little to no, it doesn't have to be no service. It could be just really bad service. Or it could be a smaller number, but a very high percentage of that number have little to no cell service. So that's where you talk about significant. It becomes a little bit, it's somewhat undefined, somewhat subjective. But again, it's the applicant, it's the applicant's job to prove to you why this gap exists. So if there's an analysis done that says, somebody comes in and says, "Hey, you know, I've done an analysis." I don't know how you do this. But 88% of Verizon users in this area have services fine. It works great. You know, that may refute what the applicant is trying to convince you to do. So, you know, you have to balance those two competing arguments. But I would suggest that for the most part, the cost of going through the process, you know, that Verizon or AT&amp;T or T-Mobile or Sprint or whomever is going to, their first, their first decision-making is, is, "We got a gap here." Because, to be honest with you, they probably don't want to spend the money to go through the process and build a tower if they don't have a gap. Now, this is different, and we're not going to get into it today, but this is different than replacements of towers or modifications of towers. That's a little bit more complex, and it's not an issue that you will see probably when talked about modifications. So this is new towers going in to private property, non-public property. Okay? Any other, yes, sir?
John, does the applicant have to speak to all the ancillary stuff? Like power? I mean, the guy next door doesn't want you putting power lines across his.
Well, that would go to least intrusive, that's part of your least intrusive analysis, so.
Or the power goes out and he's got a gun set. It starts up, and now he's.
Again, goes to the least intrusive method. If you're in, let me give you this example. If you're in Northern California, and you're going to build a cell tower, you're damn sure going to put a generator on that thing, because PG&E shuts off the power every fall for fear of starting fires. So if you're living next door to it, is this the least intrusive means of doing this? And the argument from the applicant would be, "Absolutely. We can't just rely on PG&E power to do that." So, you know, whether that's a factor here, I don't know. But it's up to the app, say again? They all have generators, okay. So, because it needs power to operate.
But you got to, if you have a generator, now you need a road for a propane truck to come in and out.
Well, and again, usually these locations are in places that are accessible, because they have to have a road there to get in with the crane and the construction crew and everything anyway. So, you know, you're, and I would also suggest, they look, the applicants look for places that are sort of logical. They don't look to put them in, right, I mean, if they're going to put it in a neighborhood, which happens often, because we want to provide cell service to residential areas. Particularly, by the way, this last spring, the cell service demand in residential areas skyrocketed because everybody worked from home. So you had a huge spike in demand in cell service in residential areas, which probably is a trend that is likely to continue. So what they're looking at is, what's a good location in this residential area that is sort of the least intrusive way? And if I'm the applicant, I'm going to say, "Well, I looked at this location, looked at this location, looked at this location, and this is the best location, and here's why." And again, one of the factors could be, you know, "There is a better location, but that property owner never called me back." Or they're just not interested in putting a cell tower on their property. You know, again, the applicant can't force a private property owner to take a cell tower on his property, which might be a better location than the one they're proposing. You know, but that's kind of the, but again, that's a valid reason to say, "This is the best location, the least intrusive location." Because the one that's actually better isn't available to me as an applicant. So those are factors. And again, this is a little bit kind of in hypothetical world, so it's a little harder to maybe grasp. But once you get the application in in next week or the next couple of weeks, it'll all kind of gel. Like mush.
John, can you go to your flow chart again and take a look at that? So it doesn't say the law, you must deny a cell tower, as it could.
Right.
So we're talking about, sometimes you're not having these. Really good means.
Right.
Cover some areas.
Yeah. So again, you're right. So Matt's point is, is that there is sort of a decision, decision, you know, decision, 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 must approve. Decision, 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 don't have to approve, could deny. But that's where you, your sort of discretion comes in to say, "You know, I'd prefer a different location, but really, there's nobody here. This isn't a location that I think there's a better one, but there's nobody here objecting to it. So sort of no harm, no foul. Let's approve it." I mean, you're not obligated to, it's not a yes or no. It's a yes or maybe. Any other questions? Because I've concluded my portion.
Absolutely not.
Thank you, John.
They're feeding you. If you get to noon, they have to feed you. That's the law. Oh, you're going to have to cite that law.
That's the volunteer, volunteer fair labor.
Thank you.
So we've already touched on some of this. And I will point out that the admonition to police talking to microphones means that people are watching you. It is important that the public knows what goes on at these meetings, and they have an interest in it. So you will have an audience. They will watch you on TV, or they will zoom into the meeting by various means and participate in these meetings. So again, that's one of the things why your recommendations are important. This gives an opportunity for the public to talk an additional time beyond council. They're talking to you mostly on specific things, because your limited scope compared to council's somewhat broader scope. But it's an opportunity for public input. And then council's meeting is the second opportunity for public input. So that very process gives the public an added benefit by having you look at it. But council relies on your recommendations for a couple of other reasons. One is, you're the first official review of something in a public meeting, and a conversation with Commissioner Hutchison, he used the term, "Your job is to turn over all the rocks to see what's in here." And then, when it gets to council, that's already been talked about. It's already been brought into the public's understanding and knowledge. And then your recommendation to them includes that information. So you're vetting the process to a degree for council. So it's very important for you to go through your full process to ask all the questions you need to ask and to make the decisions you need to make in order to make that recommendation on the council. They rely on you for that reason. And I have talked a lot today, and for some reason I'm starting to, like, yeah. Yes, sir?
George, you mentioned earlier that, you know, every one of us is going to bring a different level of knowledge whenever a project comes forward. At what point does it become a conflict of interest? By general rule of thumb, that knowledge. Like where do we, where do we kind of draw the line? Say, for instance, benefiting financially, it seems really obvious, family involvement with maybe a project that's coming in? Are there other things that we really need to be aware of?
I'll let John talk to you about that, but there is a more thorough discussion of those types of things that we generally do. And I think there's another training scheduled in the future, and I think they'll go into more detail on that.
Yeah, that's true. Well, George is right, so John Palladini here. When we talk about conflicts of interest, we're talking about financial or business conflicts. So we're not talking about, you know, philosophical policy views, inside, not, a little bit of inside knowledge. You know, that doesn't create a legal or statutory conflict of interest. If you're going to benefit from a decision, either. Right, well, yeah, if you're going to benefit or be harmed financially or from a business standpoint by a decision, or if your family member is going to be benefited or harmed by a decision, then you have a potential conflict of interest. So what your job is to sort of understand, spot the issue. You don't have to make the decision for yourself. You just pick up the phone and call us or email us, and we'll be able to do the analysis based on the facts you give us. And we'll tell you, A, you have a conflict, or B, you don't have a conflict. But if you have, you know, inside information or have sort of specialized knowledge on something, if you were, you know, we just talked about cell towers. If you were in the cell tower building business and now, you know, or somehow were involved in cell technology, but you're no longer in that industry, you don't have a conflict or interest just because you know something or know more about a topic than not. I mean, we obviously have people here who've done building and development. You know, we've had architects in the past. I mean, they, you don't have a conflict just because you have some additional specialized knowledge. But if you're an architect and, or a realtor, let's say, for instance, and you have a potential to, if some projects approve, that you or a family member is going to be one of the brokers or an agent on the deal, you probably, you might have a conflict. You should come talk to us. So if there's a potential for you to benefit or be harmed, or a family member benefited or be harmed, generally, from a financial standpoint, then definitely come see us. And then, as George was saying, in July, August, we'll have a sort of full-blown training for all boards and commissions and city council. We do it annually to sort of go through it a little bit more detail.
Thanks.
Thanks, John. If you have any other questions, I think we're probably at a point where we're down to your questions. Anything beyond that?
Any questions, Hana? Before we conclude, I would encourage you that if you have questions, call staff. You know, that's the best source for getting an answer to this. And that may generate more information coming to the rest of us at the meeting time, too. So I again want to welcome our new members. I look forward to working with you. I think you have an opportunity to bring new perspective to the commission here. And I will adjourn the meeting.
Thank you all.